Good evening. It's Monday, December 16, 2013. I'd like to welcome you all to the special meeting of the Glendale Transportation and Parking Commission. May we have roll call?
Commissioner Kirkchun?
Here.
Commissioner Sahakian?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Bartoszo?
Here.
Chairperson Yakubian?
Here.
Next item, Manoush.
Item 1A, Flag Salute, Chairperson Yakubian.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 2 is the posting of the agenda. The agenda for the Monday, December 16, 2013, Special Meeting of the Glendale Transportation and Parking Commission was posted by December 11, 2013, before 5:30 PM on the bulletin board outside of City Hall.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 3 is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. The commission may question the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision.
I don't have any cards. If anyone's here for oral communication, if you haven't turned in your card, I don't think so tonight. Next item, Manoush.
Item 4 is information only. Item 4A is a presentation by Mr. Doug Failing.
Wonderful.
Chairperson Yakubian, members of the commission, it's my distinct pleasure to introduce to you, Mr. Doug Failing, Executive Director of Highway Program with LA County Metro, who's here graciously tonight to provide a presentation on Metro's highway program, the Measure R, Highway Operational Improvement specifically related to our region. With that, thank you.
Thank you, Rubik. It's a pleasure to be here, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I was very, in a very good mood about, was it probably a month ago, I had a chance to have lunch with a very good friend of mine I haven't talked to in a long time, Armando Gonzalez. Turns out, he's a member of your fairer commission and wondered if I would come over and do a little presentation for you on what we've been up to lately. I very much appreciated it. As you can imagine, Armando started to talk to me about, okay, that's fine, now what can we do next? So I'm hoping to use this presentation for a chance to maybe have a conversation about what some of the opportunities are for what might be things that Glendale wants to do next. Let's go to the first slide. In Measure R, which was passed by the voters in November of 2008, began collecting taxes then in July of 2009, there were a number of funds spread out through the greater Los Angeles County. Some funds devoted to transit, some funds devoted to highway projects, some funds devoted to operations and maintenance for the first time ever of our system. It was very good for us to see that recognition, specifically here in Glendale, which is a part of the recognized Arroyo Verdugo subregion at that time. We identified really just an amorphous pot of funds that were available for congestion reduction within the greater subregion. We had three such subregions that we're working on that were identified that way. There's the Los Virginas Malibu subregion, there's the South Bay subregion, and then the Arroyo Verdugo subregion. Each, each subregion approached their project list very differently. What's important to us at Metro is that there be consensus amongst the subregion on the projects that are coming forward. So what we have done is we've taken the pots of funds that are available, there's a, if I recall correctly, 170 million or 176 million, which one is it, Rubik? 170 million, available in the Arroyo Verdugo subregion, and we asked the subregion to come forward with a list of projects. In the, in your subregion, you've basically decided that each city will approach it individually, and you've come to consensus on the, the amount of funds to be available to each subregion, and that's fine with us. And then you brought forward a list of consensus projects. We've been very pleased. Glendale is the leader in the subregion here, has definitely brought forward your projects first, and you have worked very hard to deliver your projects first. Let's go into the next slide, because that's really what's important here tonight, is really what's happening in Glendale. By the way, staff brought, gave me a series of talking points here, but I looked at them, and they're exactly what's printed on the slide, only in larger font. My staff knows I need larger font, so I'm not going to read from my notes tonight, because you can read them at your own pace. Glendale stepped out front. Glendale delivered the first of the Measure R highway projects that went to construction and was completed. Fact is, it's one of those I showcase as I, as I talk with other areas about how to deliver projects. First one to get that, this project funded my Measure R funds, thank you, Rubik, on one of your signs that went up. But there are very much a series of projects. You can see, we track all the projects very closely. You have one project completed, you have a number of projects in the environmental design phase, and then you have a series of other projects within the Glendale subregion that have scope pending. At this point in time, most of the projects in the Glendale, City of Glendale area, are focused on where the greatest congestion is for your residents. It's on your city streets. You have been working hard on signal synchronization, you've been working hard on other corridors to make sure that traffic moves well in and about your city. You've brought forward good projects. Metro has been happy to support those projects. We have a process that takes those individual projects forward to our board twice a year on a biennial basis. As you add new projects or want to make changes, our board blesses those projects, and then we work with your staff to move those projects into construction. 170 million is not, not a bad chunk of funds. Every city that I've ever talked to could use more, but I'm here today to let you know that we're very pleased with the work that we've been doing with the City of Glendale, and to start a discussion on what you would like to talk about. With that, I'll take questions.
I have a question. Thank you very much, Doug.
Yes.
On the second page, the 34.4 million, sounds like that's through 2019.
Correct.
And so that, the 170 million less the 34 still leaves that amount for the Glendale area?
The 170 is through the entire Arroyo Verdugo subregion, so there's a portion that goes to Glendale, there's a portion that goes to Burbank, there's a portion that will go to Lockinata Flint Ridge, and there is a portion that, that goes into the unincorporated county area of La Grisena, which is a part of the, the Arroyo Verdugo subregion. When we established the amounts per subregion, we, we did a, we, this is before I arrived at Metro, but Metro did a calculation based on equity, so we looked at population within the subregion, we looked at jobs within the subregion, and we did a balancing act to make sure that each subregion received a fair share of what those funds were. And then, in the subregion, Glendale, Burbank, Lockinata, county didn't really participate at that point in time, but they're starting to wake up now, had a decision about what would be each, each fair share for each individual city. I'm going to look at Rubik, through 2019, that's your first decade money, if I recall correctly, you have additional funds in the second and third decade?
Correct.
That is correct. So we split the money up over the three decades that Measure R is in place.
Is it kind of like first come, first served, or is it based on priority, or?
No, oh, no, 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 no. It's, it's, it's not a first come, first serve. What we're looking for is to make sure everyone has access to the funds, and we're looking to make sure that the, the projects are good. So we do do an internal nexus study to make sure that they are good projects, they're relieving congestion, you're hitting the hotspots. Glendale just happens to have stepped up first and really moved your projects forward. So even though it's not a first come, first served, it, it never hurts to be adventurous.
Madam Chair, if I may, Doug, thank you for coming. I know you have a crazy busy schedule. One question that I have, has Metro identified in the, within the Arroyo Verdugo subregion, any projects on the freeway system that would improve off-ramp, on-ramp operations? In Glendale, it's not a, it's not a secret, during PM rush hour or AM rush hour, our on-ramps, and including the metering, the signalization, with weaving, merging, converging, needs improvement. Would that fall under our staff, our city staff, to identify those projects, or Metro would look at, at such projects?
Yeah, and in, in Arroyo Verdugo, on the freeways, there's a couple of things that are happening, happening. Particularly, you're well aware of the widening that's happening on, on Interstate 5. That was, there were funds identified for I-5 in Measure R. We've been able to actually backfill a lot of those funds using other funds. Proposition 1B came about, so we've been able, so we expect when that project closes, there will actually be some excess funds that we'll be discussing with the Arroyo Verdugo subregion about how to, how to redistribute to other needs within Arroyo Verdugo subregion. So there is certainly the I-5 widening, which is an important project in, through the entire region in California, but very important here in the Arroyo Verdugo subregion and Glendale as well. That's the first piece. Second piece is, we would ask that the City of Glendale work with Caltrans. You've got 134, you've got 2, you've got a number of other routes that experience congestion. We would ask that the City of Glendale, and we'd be happy to, in fact, is we've already done it, and we know that the city's working with them, to work with Caltrans to identify what other projects you would like to see pursued on the freeway system, and then we'll work with you on either identifying Measure R funds that could be used for those types of projects. If it's a freeway project, generally speaking, you're reducing a lot more congestion, so we will try and leverage, help you leverage those funds, bring in other funds where we can find them, make sure that your Measure R dollars go further. Yeah, it's been very collaborative, and we jumped up right from the start and began meeting immediately with Caltrans and City of Glendale. We had two, we have two, let me elaborate a bit. We have really two goals here. Number one is to make sure the Measure R dollars are getting put to work. And the first projects that could move forward were smaller projects on city streets, because they require a little less setup work, a little less environmental work. So we began putting projects together immediately. Those bigger projects, like the ones on 134, other places that may be of interest to Glendale, take a little longer to develop, so we wanted to move forward on both fronts simultaneously.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Failing, thank you again for coming. It's a pleasure having you here. Off the subject a little bit, I'm going to take advantage of you coming here, just not related to Measure R, but since it hasn't been in the news, or I haven't been catching wind of it, do you have any updates, or, you know, maybe tell us what Metro's stand is with the whole 710 issue that's, that's brewing, since that would significantly affect our highways and, and all that, so?
Yes, ma'am. I, I will answer that, and I anticipated that question might come up.
Go ahead.
Yes, there, there's, the SR 710 is a identified project in Measure R, which is a gap closure, if you will, between the 210 and the 10, primarily in the San Gabriel area, San Gabriel Valley area, but the impacts of that project are wide, would be widely felt. Our Metro Board has directed staff to perform an environmental document on that project, and we're currently looking at five alternatives. So we're developing all five alternatives equally. First one is clearly a no-bill alternative, what happens if you do nothing. Second alternative is a TSM TDM alternative. So you go in, much like Glendale is doing, you fix certain city street intersections, you enhance some transit service, do other things to do traffic system management and traffic demand management, and we evaluate what impacts that project would have. Then there's three build alternatives that we're looking at, or three of the more major build alternatives. One is a bus rapid transit line. That bus rapid transit line, on the north end, really circles Pasadena City College and Caltech, travels down Del Mar to Fair Oaks, comes down Fair Oaks Avenue through Pasadena and South Pasadena to Huntington Drive, goes up Huntington Drive into Alhambra to Atlantic, comes all the way down Atlantic then, past the 10, actually past the 60, and ends at Whittier Boulevard. We have a lot of east-west bus traffic on Whittier Boulevard, so to make sure that is an alternative, performs in the best way possible, that project would go all the way down to Whittier Boulevard. The, the, the next big build alternative we're doing is a light rail transit alternative. That light rail transit alternative starts at the north end at Fillmore Station in Pasadena, basically comes down again roughly along Fair Oaks Avenue, fully entunnelled the entire way, so there's a vertical station change at Fillmore. Has stations in South Pasadena, station in Alhambra, it cuts over and actually has a station at Cal State LA, so we service Cal State LA, and then it goes down into East Los Angeles, unincorporated County, East Los Angeles, and has its last station, again, a vertical transfer at the Gold Line. So it goes from Gold Line to Gold Line, if you will. LA's transit is built around a hub and spoke system with the hub, for most of us really being Union Station, although it's two hubs, Union Station and Seventh and Metro. So this is the beginning of, if you will, the wheel end around that, which is, which is the next level of development. So that's the, that alternative is being developed. And then the third alternative is a freeway tunnel alternative. It would go basic, in the tunnel, it's underground pretty much the full way. The tunnel at the north end begins north of Del Mar, bubbles underneath Pasadena, underneath South Pasadena, underneath City of Los Angeles, to south of Valley Boulevard, and then the tunnel daylights before the 10 freeway. So that's the third alternative. We're developing all alternatives to the fullest extent. We anticipate there will be a draft environmental document out next spring, so we're targeting that March-April timeframe for that draft to be released to the public. There'll be a series of public hearings, meetings held on that, and then our board will tell us if we have a position or not. At the moment, our board has directed us to fully develop all alternatives to the maximum extent practical. That's what we're doing.
And so with the, I'm sorry, would the EIR have, would it indicate if you were to take that, that option of the freeway connection?
Yes.
Tunneling, what the impact of the increase in traffic on the areas that affect, say, Glendale, which would, you know, be the 2 and the 134 specifically, what, would, would that be included in the EIR?
Yeah, all three of the major build alternatives include a very wide area for looking at the traffic impacts, where there are anticipated to be increases and where there are anticipated to be decreases as well. And the area that we, on the west side, was the 2 freeway, all the way up to the 210, basically comes down the 210, and the 2 to the 5, a little bit of downtown goes all the way out to the 605, so we're looking at that broadened area. And in fact, traffic impacts, we're, we're trying to do some of the traffic impacts as far as way as, if you will, Santa Clarita and other areas that we, there could be impacts as well. So whatever the model will pull out, we'll have in the, we'll have in the environmental document. For all three of those build alternatives.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions?
Somewhat related to Measure R, Doug. When this was passed, and it says here that there are some scopes pending on the rest of the ones where the little blue dots are.
Correct.
Are those scopes then potentially revisable, if they're, or are those already defined over this one decade? I mean, is that something that we have already determined as a city?
We've worked with the city. We have a general idea of the location of what you would like to accomplish, but the exact scope of the project has not been fully defined, so we're working with the city, and we're fully able to work with you and make adjustments as are appropriate for your city.
So, thank you. Then, then the second paragraph on the first page, it says that this has to do with traffic flow, mobility, and enhancing pedestrian safety.
Oh, yes.
So, it seems to be totally related to non-public transportation, if I'm interpreting it correctly, and more has to do with cars, and maybe buses, I guess, which would help. But am I correct in saying that this measure does not allow any potential work as maybe seed money for potential light rail transit?
The Measure R was unique in that it created certain pots, and it, it created highway pots of funds and transit pots of funds.
I see.
And it created certain times at which you can redo that mix of funds. The first time that we're, that the Metro Board by a two-thirds vote is allowed to revisit that mix of funds is 2019.
Okay.
And then, once a decade after that, they can revisit that mix again. But just because something's identified as a highway project doesn't mean that all of your active transportation elements that may be important in your city, whether it's bicycles, pedestrian activities, highway activities, cannot be considered for improvement as a part of this.
So am I correct in asking that the Safety Committee that's been established relative to pedestrian, that something could come out of that, that there would be some monies available to do improvements? I'm just asking, is that an appropriate assumption?
Well, let, let, let me address it, Rubik. As long as it is associated, the Measure R is restricted to congestion reduction. If that safety project, we're able to find a nexus to the reduction of congestion or some other improvement that we're doing in the area, then yes, whenever you're doing an improvement in an area, you always look at safety and improving safety as well as you're doing it. But if we came in with something that we wanted to say was just a safety project, had no congestion reduction, we would have, we'd have, we'd have difficulty finding nexus in the Measure R ordinance. But we need to be creative, but Rubik thinks big, so, okay.
I have another, a couple more, but I can wait, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
So while it's very good to get an understanding of the highway operational improvements, I think I heard you mention there was also a transit that was passed as a part of Measure R?
There is, there are, there was transit, funds identified as a part of Measure R. In the transit side, they identified specifically a series of projects that, that are transit, transit improvements. Several are, one is already built, is the Orange Line Extension north from the Warner Center to, up to Silmar. That's open to traffic now. There's one that's being built by, or two of them, they're being built by outside authorities, they're under construction today. So that's the Gold Line foothill extension from Pasadena to Zusa is the first leg, and then there'll be a Zusa to Clermont with additional funding, some other leg. You have the Expo Phase 2 extension from Culver City to Santa Monica, which is currently under construction. Metro's awarded the contract for the Crenshaw Line, so that goes from the Expo Line down past almost to LAX. We hope to fix that someday.
Please.
And it interlines with the Green Line. We have the Downtown Regional Connector, which helps all of, all of the greater Los Angeles area. That one, we have started the procurement process. We've not awarded a contract. Same thing with West Side Subway, Phase 1. So there are a series of named projects. None of those were named in Glendale, though.
Right.
So I won't give you the other list, because you'll just get mad at me.
Without getting mad, I just wanted to ask a few things, because you said really something really well at the beginning, was to see if there's an opportunity to not only get an update of what's happening, but maybe start a dialogue into an item that I think there are some, there is interest in, and that is how to get Glendale better connected with the public transit, especially the, the light rail transit. There's a really good map on the Metro website that shows all the projects, the project map.
Yes.
And it's, it's very illustrative of what seems to be, to me--
I might actually have it on here if you want me to display it, but I'd have to go through a couple of PowerPoints and find it, so maybe we're better off not trying that.
Well, it just depends on whether the commissioners have time for it, but I think, I think you might be able to--
I know the map.
You know the map, good.
I know the map.
And others might have interest, but it, it really displays that there is no future, at least now today, any discussion heading towards any light rail transit connection within, say, Glendale. I know we have our Metro Link, and we have Amtrak--
Correct.
--for public transportation, but if we look at the future relative to the connection to any of the light rail system, it doesn't seem to be on the boards.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct, Commissioner, that the, the projects, the 12 identified projects did not come into Glendale for light rail or, or heavy rail transit. You are correct in noting that we do have proposed improvements in, on the Metro Link system, which impacts the, the Amtrak system, which does come into your area, and there's a series of projects we're moving forward. But there are no identified light rail transit projects coming into Glendale. We're actually, just since you gave me an opening here, sir, we are beginning discussions with our board of considering another measure at some point in the future. We, our board has given us direction to pull some information together to approach them in January. Well, they'll be giving us direction as to whether they want to go forward 2012, 20, or 2012's passed, 2014, 2016 with a new measure. I mean, that's the perfect opportunity for Glendale, you know, or any community that has an interest in light rail transit, to be pushing for extensions of those lines, whether it's at a westerly reach of the Gold Line, it's not too far away, just kind of come straight out to 134 into Glendale. We have had conversations with the City of Burbank about doing things that can, that can lead from the Red Line Station up to the Metro Link Station servicing Burbank Airport, which also may have interest to residents in Glendale as well. So there's a number of things, conversations we're beginning, just beginning to have, and so that's a perfect time for Glendale to begin thinking of if something like that would be a benefit to you, and you are fortunate. One of our directors does happen to be a council member here in Glendale, so I'm pretty sure that there would be a willing set of ears to listen to your thoughts.
Well, that's, that's good to hear. What, I don't know the history of this, but wasn't there at one time some discussion years back on Glendale being connected with Pasadena and Burbank with the light rail?
I believe there was, but it was before I had come to Metro, so I mean, in my previous position, I had heard about that conversation, but I don't know where it went, sir.
Okay.
Just because I wasn't there at the time, I don't have the history.
Right, right. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Failing, for coming. The only question that I had about the operational improvements was, I noticed that a lot of these projects, the scope is pending.
Correct.
If, for some reason, these projects fall through, or the city continue, or in the future does not want to pursue these projects, does the money get lost within the city, or does it go back to Metro? Does the city have the opportunity to look for other projects to spend that money?
Yeah, great question, thank you. No, this, this money does not get lost to the Arroyo Verdugo subregion, and based upon the agreement that the subregion has, it does not get lost to Glendale. So if, as you're looking at these projects, a much better idea comes up, or because of redevelopment, or whatever purposes, the need in a specific area may not be as great, we're more than happy to, to work with your staff on redefining how those monies can be spent for congestion reduction. We are limited to the congestion reduction concept within your, your fair city.
Thank you.
First of all, thanks for coming, Mr. Failing. This was very informative for me, and all the projects that are identified, how are you prioritizing which ones to go first?
We're asking Glendale to come up with a priority for us. We've identified a funding plan over the 10 years with a certain amount of money in each of those years, and your city staff has worked to develop a spending plan based upon priorities that, that we believe are the priorities of the City of Glendale. So we've not found any projects that we said are bad projects, so we, as far as Glendale is concerned, we've not influenced any of the projects, other than saying, you can only have so much per year. Rubik would like it all in one year, first I'll let you know right now, but we've said, no, you've got to have so much per year like everyone else.
You mentioned a few times that this money is intended only for congestion, congestion reduction only.
Yes, sir.
This is in regards to public transportation, which would be for roads and, and, for new roads or realigning roads and so forth?
It, it could be for new or realigned roads. There, there's not a lot of money within Glendale, so it would be very difficult to proba, you could, but it wouldn't be a lot of money to really deal with a lot of that. But the, the ordinance that was passed by the voters does identify it as a highway pot of funds and that it be congestion reduction, and those are the only two limits we really have on these funds. And those are the only two limits we really have on these funds.
Chairperson Yukopian, Commissioner Krukjian, just to add to Mr. Failing's comments, the other criteria is that the project will have to be within a mile of a freeway.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Within a mile of the freeways?
Any freeway.
Of the freeway, that is correct, thank you, Rubik. That was one of our board-developed criteria.
The reason I brought it up, because unlike neighboring cities, Glendale doesn't really have, has only one east-west turf fair. Pasadena, starting from New York Drive all the way down to Colorado, they have east-west turf fairs, so is northwest, with all of, starting from Fair Oaks, Lake Hill, and so forth. We only have Glen Oaks. And well, these funds can be allocated to realign Glen Oaks, to connect to Glen Oaks Avenue, which alleviates traffic from Mountain and Kennet, all those people, and it'll be much easier for people in the northwest Glendale to get to, to come east and then to come south to Glendale. And it's easier for a lot of people to get on the freeway, whether it's at 134 or the two freeway.
Commissioner Krukjian, that's a very good idea. Unfortunately, our challenge is the public right of way. And there may be private properties that will be in the way of that realignment that you're suggesting.
I understand that, but there's also the river, which could cover the river as well.
Right, and that will have to be coordinated with the Army Corps of Engineers, and it's a very complicated process.
But in terms of priorities, that could alleviate a lot of traffic and congestion.
We will look into it. It hasn't been part of our list of priorities, and I'd be more than happy to share our 10-year list of projects that have been funded with Measure R and what we're planning to do until the year 2019 in a future meeting. I'm actually planning to do a presentation to the State Council in January, so I'll be more than happy to provide the same presentation to you. So you know where we are as far as the city staff is concerned and how we've coordinated with Metro.
Thank you. Thank you for failing.
You're welcome, sir.
May I, yes, that's it. Thank you very much, Mr. Failing.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I want to skyrail from the Gateway Plaza to Dodger Stadium, but we'll talk about that later.
Yeah, let's talk.
I talked to Art about it a couple of days ago, and we should push it.
I have somebody working on something. We should talk someday. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you, okay. Anush, what's next?
Item five is public hearing. Report regarding application for renewal of an owner's permit to operate taxi cab service in the city of Glendale by San Gabriel Transit Incorporated, DBA Bell Cab Company.
Great. Rubik?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, the item before you, like Anush mentioned, it's a public hearing for the renewal of the application to operate a taxi cab. And on July 25, 2013, our City Clerk's Office received a renewal application for an owner's permit by San Gabriel Transit, Inc., doing business as Bell Cab Company. And applicant has submitted application within the window that's specified in our municipal code. And staff has reviewed the application based on a number of criteria. Actually, there are 12 steps that staff has gone through and has determined that the application meets all the requirements. Hence, we respectfully recommend that your commission approve the application for renewal of an owner's permit to operate 12 taxi cabs in Glendale by the Bell Cab Company. They are currently operating 12 vehicles and requesting to renew permits for the same number of taxi cab. Staff from City Clerk's Office, Maria Maldonado is here. Her responsibility is to inspect these vehicles on an annual basis, so if you have any questions for her. Mr. Victor Caballero is the General Manager of Operation of the Bell Cab Company, if you have any questions regarding operation. And for the rest of the questions, both Mr. Aldesco, Ms. Beglarian, myself are available to respond to. Thank you. We need to open the public hearing.
I'm sorry? To open the public hearing, do I have any comments, or no, at this point? So open and closed. Thank you, thank you, Rubik. Do we have any questions?
Just quickly, have we had any complaints against Bell Cab in the last 12-month period?
Chairperson Yukopian, members of the Commission, no, there have been no complaints whatsoever in the last 12 months regarding this company.
And then nothing has changed, and from what I read, it's renewal of the existing 12 permits, and it's not an addition.
That is correct.
Excuse me, a question I have, Madam Chair.
Yes.
On the motion, unless I'm missing it, I don't see the timeframe for this. I know the ordinance gives it a timeframe, but is there a timeframe for this next? Should this be approved? Is there a timeframe that this goes for? I just don't see it in the motion, but maybe it's supposed to be somewhere else.
Commissioner Gonzalez, I'm sure I understand your question. Are you asking about the term for the permit itself?
Yes.
The permit?
Should the permit be approved? Is there, what is the term for that new permit? For the renewed permit?
It would be a five-year term.
So where does that say, where does that, is it based on our code?
It's in the municipal code.
Oh, okay. So that letter A then ties in the timeframe?
That is correct.
On the motion? And the previous one was five years? The one we're currently have is five years?
Yes, Commissioner, it was.
But it's also a conditional permit, correct? If there's any complaints or anything comes up, it can be reviewed by the board?
Yes, it absolutely can.
I don't have any questions about this permit, per se. I think they have, the company has a really good track record. I more have an inquiry about the process in which the taxi cab renewals go. So in the report, it says that the recommendation from staff is that we should approve this because there isn't an increase in the number of taxi cabs that are being requested. And it's for five years. So what if we have company number six? Because I understand there's five that are currently operating in the city. What if company number six comes to us next month, and as a result of that, the following five companies that further want requests will exceed the cap for taxi cabs in the city? I'm just a little concerned about how this process is being run, if we should be doing this on a company-by-company basis at different time periods, or it should all be done at once? I'd like to know more about how that works.
Commissioner Bartosoff, what the ordinance provides, provides for applicants to submit an application for permits on an annual basis. The period is sometime between, I believe, July and August of each year. And that's when the applicants would fill, and that's when they, you know, basically, their licenses would expire at the end of the five-year period of time. So it wouldn't be that all of them would be looked at at the same time. And that has been the procedure all along. However, this commission can change those rules, provided that it changes, you know, the ordinance, that we take it at a council, and council provides a different kind of ordinance, and we can have a different kind of process as well. At the same time, if you're concerned about, you know, the length of time that, you know, that an applicant, a licensee would have under the ordinance, you could revisit, you could possibly revisit, you know, each applicant at your discretion as well. Because, you know, you have the power under the ordinance to determine, you know, how many licenses are provided on an annual basis, whether you wish to decrease them or you wish to increase them. But for that, you would have to have information regarding the, you know, the quality of the services provided in the community and how it serves the community. And you'd have to make some findings about what is indicated based on your judgment.
So I guess my next question would be, has there been any issues with companies other than these five requesting a permit and not, them not being granted because they're new to the city, or?
Well, I can maybe shed some light on that, because we've had a couple of companies throughout the years that did come to commission for additional licenses. Here's the sticking point. There's no science to the cap as far as the number, how many we should allow. And I've always been unhappy with it, because I feel that taxi cabs that are roaming the city looking for fares would add to traffic. And I also wanted to see if new companies are coming in, they need to have green cars, zero emission vehicles. That's what I wanted to push for. Having said that, I believe we had two companies, they came, and we denied them, but they also had a bad track record in other cities. It was not just denied because the commission decided there's no need and necessity. They had a bad record with other cities that they serviced. Some of them were even bandit-cabbing some cities, I believe, which I want to bring up later, discuss that. But yeah, I mean, if that answers the question.
Yeah, I guess, as of right now, I feel a little uncomfortable voting on this, and it's to no objection to the company that's here today. I'm just a little concerned about the process. So maybe there will be some more clarification with more questions that are being asked. But I just have some concern if there's a new company that comes forward before, you know, the fifth company that's already working in the city comes in with their request, there's going to be some conflict, and there's going to be some issues in the future with respect to not every company applying at the same time. So I guess this issue hasn't come up in the past, and I hope it doesn't in the future, so I'll leave it at that.
It's a familiar concern that you're bringing up. Adam, if you recall, I remember...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it was the commission's concern throughout the years, but at the same time, we haven't had, you know, companies knocking at our door asking for permits. That one company came only for two permits, with two permits, and they had violated some rules of other cities. It hasn't been an issue.
Plus, and credit to the city for having, you know, very good standards on what they expect for their taxi cab companies to have come forth. So it is kudos to those that are in the game right now and are following the rules. You know, that's a plus. I wanted to ask the special programs, and maybe, this is the first time it's coming across to me, is this a new? You know, I find it impressive, I just, I've never run across this before about the guaranteed ride home programs, the discountery, the drunk drivers. Is this something new that's starting with this? Or is this, this has always been implemented with these?
The companies have the option of implementing those at will. Of course, if they do have that, it better serves the community, and as you said, it gives them a little edge against another company, maybe...
Yeah, not all the other taxi cab companies we've dealt with, they have this in place, am I correct?
Some do, some don't have as many.
Yeah.
Perhaps that would be better answered by one of the representatives that's here tonight.
Yeah, and I also have a question for him, so if you may step to the podium.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Victor Caballero, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Well, if you could tell me about the special, you're not required to do all of these programs. Can you tell me why this is part of your, is this something new? Is this something that you've had from, you've been with, you have been operating in Glendale for quite some time?
Yes, we have.
Is it down to 90, is it 94, right?
Yes.
So is this, tell me a little about these special programs, how long you've been implementing it, and a little bit about it.
We have an assortment of different programs that we make available to the community. Something that you didn't mention was our 10% discount for the senior community of the city as well. And frankly, if you notice, you don't see taxi cab advertising on bulletin boards or on buses. The way that we do our marketing is to get out into the community and provide services like this and get the word of mouth throughout the community, primarily through the more needy, the disabled, and the senior community that is most transit-dependent of any municipality. And Glendale is no different than other municipalities in that case.
Madam Chair, have questions?
Yes.
Mr. Caballero, first of all, commend the company for not having any violations, which I noticed in the report. That's since you've been in Glendale, or since the last five years?
You know, I can't remember the last time I got a complaint. And I frankly see all the complaints that come through our organization. It comes across my desk, and if I deem it important that I react, then I react. Otherwise, it goes on to our operations, the staff, and they handle it. But again, you know, the complaints that I've come across, because inevitably, you're going to have someone that needs to have some sort of rule or something explained to them, have been more of a question than a complaint.
I'm interpreting the word violation as something by the police department or something to that effect. That has not occurred, so I was just commending you on that operations.
Thank you.
If I'm correct of what violation means here.
Thank you.
A question, a further comment is, some of these things don't seem to be tied down time-wise, like your company's committed to replacing all its fleet with alternative fuel vehicles in the coming years.
Yes.
To meet the air quality goals of the city. Could we put some timeframes on this, please?
There actually is, Commissioner. We will be 100% green within the next 24 months.
And what does 100% green mean? You mean every car's...
Every single one of our vehicles will be either compressed natural gas or a hybrid Prius. More than likely, it'll be a hybrid Prius. It seems that that is the direction that, as an industry we are heading, anticipating the hydrogen fuel vehicles that are projected to come down the road. But for now, the Prius, to our delight, has turned out to be a very good vehicle for us.
So you anticipate being 100% green by, did you say 24 months, or 24?
Yes, within the next 24 months, we will be 100% green.
Could we request that when that happens, within that time, that that information could come to the commission? I think it would be good to see, and that, I guess, would respond to our goals relative to cleaner city?
Absolutely, Commissioner Gonzalez.
On that note, I apologize cutting you off. What I'd like to see, I'd like to see a plan of what vehicles in the fleet are being replaced at what point.
That's even better.
To show us that it's going to meet the 24-month deadline.
Commissioner, you actually have that in your staff report?
We saw a schedule, but I didn't know whether they were green or not.
Yes, they're categorized by vehicle.
Oh.
And again...
That's on Exhibit C?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I have a couple...
It doesn't mention what it's being replaced by, I think.
They will be replaced, whether it be a hybrid or a natural gas vehicle. But again, the likelihood is probably 90%, 99% chance that it'll be a hybrid vehicle, as has been the case, as you can see in the past couple of years.
So where you have the note column, we can assume that that's going to be all green, or it's going to be all hybrid, or it's going to be...
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So the request is to get that information on a regular basis?
Yes, we'll provide it to staff. You know, to Madam Chair's comment, the city of Glendale has a very robust taxi cab program from a regulatory perspective. We do business in many, many, many cities, and I've got to compliment you, because there are some cities in the county of Los Angeles that, you know, we've got every Tom, Dick, and Harry walking up and putting down their application, and they're stamped and approved. The city of Glendale doesn't do that, and we appreciate that, because those of us that operate legally within those rules do it and realize that we provide the best possible service to the community.
So are you finding that that green initiative is actually worthwhile for the business?
Yes, it does.
Primarily because of the mileage?
Well, it does, Commissioner. The cost of the vehicles, be honest with you, is substantially more than has been historically. But we believe that the investment, in the long run, is to the benefit of our company and to the community environment.
Comment, please?
Sure.
I also see another terminology in the second paragraph of Number 11 about, and I really concur with our chair regarding the programs that are under this item Number 11. I think it's very, very good to see what I'm reading there. But then it says it's in the process of launching a new website with web booking capabilities. Is there a way we can put a timeframe on that also?
I venture to say that that will be up and running within the next 90 days. We're working aggressively currently on both website optimization and development. And we are actually modifying the websites and creating the new websites in the vein, same vein as the optimizing of them is the case, because the competitiveness within the industry, quite frankly, is, it's just sometimes uncontrollable. To that point, you know, there's been... To that point, you know, there's been apps that have been introduced to the state of California and the nation that have, quite frankly, propelled banded operations in a way like no other time before, at least in the time that I've been in the business. It used to be that you'd have a taxi cab, a banded taxi cab, that was easily identified as a banded taxi cab. Nowadays, you have app dispatching through companies that do not background check, do not inspect the vehicles, allowed to operate under the guise of general insurance versus commercial insurance. And I appreciate you allowing me to make these comments, because I would ask that if we are approved tonight, one of the things that I would ask the commission to consider is to addressing the bandits in the, in the community, because it is a detriment, I believe, to the community and the overall transportation services of the community.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. On Number 2, it said vehicles are individually owned by the drivers, and therefore they are not stored under these locations. Since these vehicles are privately owned, and on Number 8, you have a comprehensive preventive maintenance program, who does this, who enforces it, how, and who does the maintenance repair, and what causes these vehicles? At one point, you go, you schedule for maintenance, for routine checkup--
Every vehicle is brought into our maintenance facility within 3,000 to 4,000 miles, give or take a few miles, and irrelevant of whether it is an owner-operator, which is for all intents and purposes the direction of our industry over the last 15, 20 years, or it is a company-owned leased vehicle, those vehicles are brought into the maintenance facility via a regiment that is established by our maintenance manager. So they are brought in, whether they are, irrelevant of who the owner is, whether he's an owner-operator or a leased driver, the vehicles are brought in for maintenance.
But the repairs are done at your facility and at, by your mechanics, by your experts?
That's correct.
It's not done by third-party mechanics and whatnot?
No, 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 they're, they are done by, at our, at our facility, and we, and as part of the lease agreement that we have with our drivers, they, they agree to this, that this is part of the agreement, the expectations that we place on them as our leased drivers or owner-operators, that they must adhere to the rules set forth by the city of Glendale, set forth by the company as it pertains to maintenance, and so on and so forth. Thank you.
I do have a question. What's your position or your opinion of having some of the taxi cabs install bicycle racks on them?
Bicycle racks?
Yes. And the reason I bring it up is because I manage the cyclovia events, you probably have heard of them--
Yes.
--within the city of L.A. And there's a demand for it, and we surveyed and we spoke with, with some people that, that they would have used a taxi cab after they got tired of biking for seven, eight miles. As you know, mass transit, now the buses, they do carry a couple of racks in front of the bus. And there was a consensus, and there was, I don't want to say a demand, but they questioned, they said, how come taxi cabs, they don't carry bike racks? Obviously, not every single one, probably--
Sure.
--just like not every bike, not every bicycle, you know, taxi cab is as handicap accessible, but what's your opinion on that?
Well, you know, it's something that has really not ever come up, but I've made a note of it.
Okay.
I will consult my dispatch department to see if there's a call for this, and if there is a call, I can guarantee you that it's something that--
Yeah, the demand could be there, and you could be the first one that could start it, I think.
Exactly, exactly, so I've made a note of it, and we'll definitely consider it.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you very much, sorry.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I personally, this, I like what I, what I've read and what staff has presented, and I'm apt to, to go with their recommendation, but will someone--
I move the motion to approve.
Second.
Very good. So, okay.
Mr. Kirkjian?
Yes.
Mr. Sahakian?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartrosov?
Abstain.
Chairperson Yakubian?
Yes.
Anush, what's next?
Now, Madam Chair, before we go to the next item, I want to discuss briefly the banded cab situation since, since it came up, and it is a concern, it is a concern not only for people using the taxi cabs, also there's a liability for the city. If we are permitting taxi cab companies and we are specifically demanding some standards, it's also important for the city to enforce the banded cab side of it. The city of L.A., they have a banded cab detail, they have investigators, they go undercover, they arrest, they impound the vehicles, they're extremely aggressive in protecting the public, because you are protecting the public. These vehicles that are banded cabs, they do not even have insurance, so if, God forbid, the vehicle is in an accident, the riders are not even covered. So talking to Gianno about a couple of years ago, this came up, and we brought it up, and staff was going to look into it, they were going to talk to city attorney, and see if they could discuss a possibility of having an enforcement branch through the police department, through Grande PD, not specific to this, but have some type of a desk where people can complain, or have some type of a sting operations, let's say, to see if, if banded cabs are, and they are coming to the city, you know, to discourage this operation. So, Rubik, you have your two cents on this.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Sahakian, and actually Commissioner Kirkjian, at our last meeting, brought up the subject, and I had mentioned that we will look into it, and I'm going to refer to the city attorney's office, and Mr. Aldesco says that he's going to definitely look into it and provide an opinion, a legal opinion, on how we can proceed. I don't recall, at least it hasn't been forwarded to me, or I haven't been made aware of what happened a couple of years ago, but we'll definitely work with the city attorney's office and provide a report.
Thank you.
Anush, next item.
Item 6, Commission Staff Comments, Updates.
Madam Chair, one question, we didn't have, we didn't approve any minutes today now. I wasn't present at the last meeting, but did we miss the item on the agenda?
Well, I think it was a special meeting, it's going to be presented at the next regular meeting.
I see, okay.
I just want to comment, I really appreciate the, the depth of the report on this last agenda item, and the work that went into that, it was very clear, and I appreciate the staff's outline, and also making a recommendation, appreciate it.
Is there an update on the pedestrian advisory safety task force?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I was waiting for my turn--
You jump in anytime, Rubik, go ahead.
So we have managed to get confirmation from nine people representative of various agencies, and advocates, and interest groups. We are working on one more person from the Chamber of Commerce, we haven't heard from that entity yet, but regardless, Anush is working on establishing our first meeting, the kickoff meeting, for some time in early January, more than likely the second week in January. So we have, for the most part, all of our members who will be intimately working together as a team, we have our own staff team, as well as representative from the community. And during those discussions, at least at the first meeting, we'll establish a timeline, some guidelines, and where to take it from that point on. More than likely, we'll have a workshop that we can invite a larger group of the community members to participate and provide feedback and their input.
Currently, who, which departments are representative, or which groups are representative in that nine?
Since you put me on the spot--
Do we have, well, let me ask you specifically, do we have a police representation?
We will have representations from police traffic bureau, from our maintenance services folks, from our traffic engineering, our city attorney's office, these are just internal city staff, and from the outside, representative from Walkby Glendale, GUSD, the police chief of the community college, representative from the Adult Daycare Association, two of the commissioners from Transportation and Parking, a planning commissioner, from our planning commission, as well as a resident and a consultant who, who works very closely with school and school districts on Safe Route 2 school programs.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes, actually, one of my staff members came to me very concerned about a couple weeks ago, and one of his best friends got killed behind taxi wheels, and it was as a result of overworking, being behind the wheel for 24 hours over Thanksgiving weekend. And after talking to him in length, found out that this person was a father, a husband, and was overworking out of need, not out of greed, and he came home, took a shower, and got, and died behind the wheel in Beverly Hills area, because he wanted to take advantage of working during busy Thanksgiving weekend. That is the bad news. The good news is, there was no passengers, and he hit a fixed object, hit a fence, that's what at least the camera that's mounted in the vehicle that has shown, that he fell asleep behind the wheel. I deal a lot with trucks when they come to my warehouse, and there is a legislation, I'm not, there is a law that truck drivers have to follow, where going to interstate, whenever they're pulled over by interstate, by troopers, state troopers, or by CHP, they have to keep a logbook of worked, drove so many hours, and they took their breaks, and so forth. And if they're driving 24 hours nonstop, they have to have team, team drivers. Now, my question is, can we come with, as a policy, come up with a policy across the board for all taxis, for them to take breaks, or whenever they're on, their dispatcher is pretty, not, for them not to be on call 24 hours a day, and take their breaks? A, and B, my understanding is, there's a lot of these taxis that are salvage vehicles. There has been another accident apparently a few months ago, where the airbag did not deploy, and another driver died. How can, how can we come up, as a policy, we can make, come up with, to regulate all the taxis, and to avoid such occurrences in the future, in memory of late Ed Massey?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Commissioner Kirkjian, the issue is, is really twofold. We have a lot of authority under our police powers to be able to regulate what goes on in the city, in order to ensure the safety of, you know, the community, right? And one of those would be in terms of being able to control, you know, the working hours, or let's say taxi drivers that are licensed by the city, to work in the city. The problem with that, however, and it's something that I would have to research, is whether there are laws at the state level that already regulate that. I'm having a difficult time believing that, well, I don't know, anything I suppose is possible, but it seems like the state would have had into, we have some rules about employment with respect to how many, number of hours that somebody can work behind, you know, and drive behind the wheel of a taxi, or a bus, or things of that nature. Of course, if those laws at the state level or the county level do not exist, then we can possibly put a policy and enforce a policy of that nature with respect to the taxi cab drivers and owners that we license in the city. That's one thing. With respect to the, to the vehicles that are salvaged, I did some research, in fact, earlier today about this issue, and there have been laws that have been enacted at the state level with respect to salvage vehicles. For example, one of the laws that's been enacted and was effective at the beginning of July 1, 2012, was to require all persons who put salvage vehicles, who sell salvage vehicles, like, you know, dealers and people of that nature, to report those vehicles to the state, so there is, so there is a database for all salvage vehicles. Sometimes they don't report, and that doesn't go through. One of the issues that comes up in these kind of cases with salvage vehicles is that oftentimes, you know, you know, unscrupulous, you know, mechanics, you know, will cut corners and remove the, you know, will not repair the, what do you call it, the airbags. So, because once the airbags are deployed, in case of an accident, there's a whole entire cost having to put those airbags back in. And I believe there was some very famous case in 2003 in San Diego, where when the airbag deployed, it had paper inside of it, so it wasn't effective. And there's a law about that as well, and the law requires them to, well, requires people to, 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 it's a misdemeanor to tamper with the airbag, you know, it's a crime to not put the airbag in. Now, having said that, once again, it's back to the same thing we were talking about earlier, which is that we can certainly put a requirement that with respect to salvage vehicles, depending on what you consider to be, you know, a concern, you know, with respect to those vehicles, but we have to make sure that it doesn't interfere with state law. The, the way it works is that state law oftentimes just preempts us, and often, and especially the vehicle code is very, very strict about what happens on the roads, and in terms of, you know, how vehicles have to, you know, operate, you know, their operating condition. So oftentimes, the vehicle code preempts, but I can definitely research this matter further to see if, within our own powers, our city powers, we can enact regulations, you know, of this nature.
But when Mr. Caballero was discussing earlier, I guess they have their own checks and balances of when they're going through cars, and if they don't own the vehicles, for example, if it's not leased, a company leased vehicle, and it's owner-operator, they can very well reject that particular vehicle when owner-operator brings them in. So it's not that difficult for them to reject the car, for example?
Absolutely. They can definitely do that, and, you know, it's, that's something that they should do, you know, they, they should have, it's, it's the law in California that all vehicles have airbags, but with respect to salvage vehicles, the issue that comes up with salvage vehicle most of the time is that people who buy them may not know they're salvage vehicles, and they're not getting as good of a deal, but there's nothing particularly dangerous about salvage vehicles in and of themselves, unless, for example, you know, somebody removed the airbags from them, or didn't repair them properly.
Because, bottom line is for safety, I mean, what if there was a passenger in that vehicle? What if there were tourists? Then we'll be on national news. I mean, we're, that's, we're trying to protect the public interest over here by applying, by putting all the checks and balances in place for taxi companies.
Yes.
So that's where I'm coming from, and then if there is a dead person, and if we can avoid occurrence, such occurrence in the future, I mean, let's do it.
Well, absolutely, one of the checks that, that we, that we can add to our checklist is to ask a question, is this a salvage vehicle?
Yeah.
We can put that question in, but again, a salvage vehicle in and of itself is not necessarily a dangerous vehicle. It's just simply a term that insurance company use when the cost of repair exceeds the value of the vehicle.
I understand. Can we agenda such a matter for our next meeting, Rubik, so we can discuss this for policy, if it's possible?
Yes.
Along with the, this, my suggestion during our last meeting for this Ubrex and whatnot is, because if these companies, independent companies like this, have dangerous vehicles on the road, and drivers that are not specifically tied into dispatch, and they're not regulated, it's basically accidents ready to happen.
Madam Chair, as member of the commission, definitely, once we provide, give an opportunity to city attorney's office to research those two matters, then we can bring them forth for your further discussion.
Thank you.
The only thing I could add to that is that we do go, that's what, what a city does, you know, we have the person to inspect each vehicle, to make sure that everything is up to par, and also the vehicles have a, have a certain age limit on them, I believe it's eight years.
Eight years, yeah.
So beyond that point, they're not even, we don't even accept them as a vehicle that can be licensed under--
That's actually great, the eight years, when I, when I was going through the report, it was the first time reading such a report, and it was very impressive.
Yeah, I think my car would qualify.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I just had-- Madam Chair, I just have two other items, please. What is the status of Mountain Avenue and Two Freeway?
That was my question. Good question. Yeah, we're on that.
Is there any update on that, please?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Commissioner Gonzalez, the good news is that we have managed to get approval from Caltrans, that was a monumental task if you've ever dealt with Caltrans. So they've approved the design, we are working on finalizing it so that we can issue a work order for staff to go and implement the changes that we had discussed.
If you wouldn't mind just refreshing our memory, because I think you were, last time we had discussed it, you had said there were a couple of options with how it was going to go, about one of them being two lanes being able to turn? Is that where we were or were you just dealing with the automatic light synchronization?
Both, Madam Chair. So Caltrans has accepted our both options and we are moving forward with both of them. So it will be the change for oncoming traffic as well as the dedicated number two lane that could go on ramp for carpool vehicles.
And, you know, when I had spoken briefly with Commissioner Sahakian, he brought up an excellent point about his concern about the radius, the turning radius of that second lane. Is there enough? I mean, obviously you guys went out there, checked, so there probably is. Did that come up to be an issue or was it close?
It was close, so it hasn't been a detrimental issue to our goal.
Okay, very good, that's a...
The other thing I was going to ask, Madam Chair, given the report that we got, the update I should say, we got from Mr. Phaling, is there any way that we could, either by resolution or by dialogue and then discussion, see what it would be possible to get into that, they're talking about a new measure potentially, right? They said 2014. And is there a way that we could encourage, I know our council member is on the board, is there any way that we from this commission can indicate that it would really be in the interest of our city to find out how we can get into that situation, either by developing some conceptual studies about how we can do this and being able to be in the best position so that the board could see the merit of getting a better connection? When you look at the map, it is not really favorable for, I believe, Glendale and into the future. The map is very clear, there's a big gap and what, the most money that's being spent is on the highway operational improvements and that shows up very distinctly. But any connection to any other system doesn't show up.
True.
So I don't, you know, I'm a new council, I mean, excuse me, I'm a new member of the commission and I was just curious, how can we, if every, if the commissioners concur, how can we get that either to the, through the city staff or through this commission to make sure that there's someone looking at this? Because I really think that this city deserves a better connection to the, the scale of the city really is important that we have a better connection to the light rail system. And I know it's expensive, but, you know, it was expensive to do the beginning of light rail too, but we should be a part of that.
On these, Madam Chair, on these bond measures, the more you assist, the more you lobby, the more you help, the more you get. It's as simple as that. And I agree with you. If right off the get-go, we're on board with MTA pushing the measure forward and lobbying for it and getting the votes for it, I think we will get a better chunk.
Well, that's, you know, Councilman Najarian is the councilman who's on the MTA board and, you know, I don't know what you would suggest, Rubik, but, you know, this, is there something officially that we could, you know, ask him or this is something that as chairperson I can directly speak to him about? How would you recommend that we impress our views on that?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, my suggestion would be to allow staff to make connection with Mr. Phaling's office, to have a clear idea of what the best steps would be. Then we will work through Councilmember Najarian to make sure that he's on board and that he can lobby for us if that's his desire.
Very good.
But I think it'll be best to, for us to contact Mr. Phaling's staff.
Office first.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be my suggestion.
Based on what you've commented on, it's obvious that when the city would be in a better position, it would really help the bond measure, should there be a bond measure. I'm just wondering, like anything else, when you make an application for something, if you show some initiative or you put some report on the table, not a major report, but something that says, this is one or two ways that there could be a connection to the, to the light rail system that would enhance better public transportation for the city. If we were to step up, that's why I was seeking whether there are any dollars for that type of a study, that we would figure out a way to be in the forefront of that effort.
And just to add, I mean, this isn't going to be a novel idea for Councilman Najarian to represent Glendale and really push for the needs. I think for the meetings that I've attended at the MTA and the results that I have seen, he has really put himself forward to get a lion's share of funding for Glendale. And that is, from my own observations, that's from talking to staff because of his efforts. So this is something, you know, he's, you know, not new to this idea of pushing, and sometimes, you know, to, to political headbutting with other members on the board, which many of you have, you know, saw in the newspapers, but he's there fighting for Glendale. So this idea is a great idea. I'm also on that idea of the connectivity and I think that he would be very, very receptive to push.
Madam Chair, but what Commissioner Gonzalez is saying, it's basically identifying the project to justify to the voters that the money will be well spent. Instead of just putting a bond measure and ideas and just titling it as congestion relief, showing them that there is a project, you could take a right layer, light rail through Glendale, it'll cost $70 million, this is what you're voting for. I think that will take it a step further.
Absolutely.
Instead of just working the political side of it.
Well, he needs assistance. I mean, it's obviously, it's a group effort mainly coming from the staff and of course speaking with Mr. Phaling's office, as you suggested, Rubik.
Because if you recall, the extension to Measure R failed. It didn't go through and there was an effort, but I believe the reason it failed because public was asking, well, what have you done with the Measure R money that you're asking for an extension, an addition in billions of dollars? Where are your projects? You're asking cities for projects, where's the list of these projects? You showed us some, but what you showed us doesn't spend the money that you have right now, so.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, absolutely correct, Commissioner Sahakian, Measure J was the extension of the Measure R that marginally failed, but there is talk about resurrecting it. And I agree with Madam Chair that we are very fortunate to have Councilmember Najarian on the board and he has been extremely helpful on getting grants and funding for us and he's been a huge advocate of funding for the city. But again, we have a very good relationship with Mr. Phaling's office, I have a very close working relationship with him and my recommendation would be, let me find out what would be the best way of handling this. Of course, getting the concurrence of the Councilmember Najarian at the onset of it so we're all moving in the same direction.
Given that, if I understood Mr. Phaling correctly, that the measure might be in 2014 or 2016, could we get a feedback then at our January meeting from your discussions with Mr. Phaling?
Commissioner Gonzalez, I cannot promise at the January meeting because the holidays are coming up and I don't know, because I have, I'd like to sit down with him face to face to get the direction and clarification, so it may be the following meeting, but I believe we have plenty of time. Usually, the ballot measure goes out in November, so it's scheduled for November, but it gets finalized by June, so we have sufficient time.
Our meeting in January is on the 27th? Am I correct? That's the fourth Monday?
Yes.
So the holidays are over on the first or the second? So we have one, two, three weeks.
Commissioner Gonzalez, I'll do my best, considering this is not my only task, but I'll do my best.
No, no, I appreciate that. I certainly respect the work that is done. I made that comment earlier and I just, I just want to make sure that we're ahead of the process, not behind the process. And the fact that you have this wonderful relationship, I think that's a real good positive. So, thank you.
That's a good point. Got to get it moving, get ahead of it.
Especially if they're going to do a bond issue and I think we may have to come up with some seed money as a city.
To do a study, yes. I agree.
Exactly. So, I mean, I think that it's just really not good that you can't get on the light rail to get anywhere in the system out of Glendale. I know we can take the Metro link, we go to downtown and take, but it just doesn't work.
It's vivid.
So I appreciate the Commissioner's interest in this and also the involvement as you're going to feedback.
Madam Chair, I do have a question and Rubik, what I'd like to find out is, when a signal goes into red flashing operation malfunction, what have you, and I observed one today come into the meeting, what's the process of having a police officer control traffic until signal repair gets on site or we reset the signal? And my concern is shopping season right now around the Galleria, it could back up easily. Within five minutes, you could have a mess on your hand. The intersection today was Mountain and Glendale, Verdugo. And you can imagine, it was around 5:45. And for some reason, it keeps happening at that intersection, so I'm thinking it's a voltage issue from little I know about signals. But if, and I know Glendale Police has better things to do, no ifs and buts about it, but if we have or we train the ticket riders, the cops that are in the jeeps, they go around for parking violations, to temporarily jump into the intersection, do traffic control until signal repair gets there. That's how it's done in the City of L.A. We use our traffic officers, of course, we have over 700 officers, we have the resources. In this case, and I'm not talking about any intersection, honestly, we're talking about the major, big ones that they really needed. And my concern again is the shopping season right now. Something to think about.
Absolutely. We'll check with our traffic bureau and see what we can do. But as you know, you may know that we have an outside contractor that does our signal maintenance. So the call comes in, we immediately let them know depending on their workload and how fast they can get to it. But we have the option of calling our motorcycle cops depending on the location and the intersection.
What's usually the response time of the contractor?
That I was going to ask again.
It depends if they're busy or not, right?
Yeah, but typically within 24 hours. We've been happy with our response.
Yeah, yeah. I can tell you, within 24 hours, usually it is fixed. But it's a long time.
I know.
Very good. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just had one, just to tag along with what Commissioner Gonzalez was saying with Metro. Beyond the measure and what we can do to advocate for that, I'd like to know if there's some way for this commission to have a better understanding of what kind of relationship we have with Metro. I'm specifically interested in existing operations in Glendale and as a, I'm a transit user, I use the bus to get to work every day. I've made, I've sent inquiries to Metro and I've not been successful in hearing back from them. So I'm thinking if the commission has recommendations on how Metro operations could improve, how do we go about doing that? Is there some kind of process? Do we have contacts on the transit side that we can reach out to other than Mr. Phaling, who mostly focuses on highway improvements?
Right. Commissioner Barhusov, you missed your opportunity. Mr. Phaling was right here. But I'm not aware, I'm pretty sure we have a contact person and I'll find that for you through our transit manager. And when I call Mr. Phaling, and it's going to be in the next couple of days, I'll ask him about that as well and see if he can direct us to the right person.
I'm a good friend with the right person. So I will go ahead and talk to him or put you in contact with him.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Sahakian's friends with all the right people. All right. Anush, what's next?
Item seven, adjournment.
I motion to adjourn.
Merry Christmas. Happy holidays.
Wait here a second. Very good.
Thank you.